Meeting is called to order. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mr. Rowley?
Mayor Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Shanks?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Please stand, remain standing for the indication in place, tonight, given by Councilmember John B. Gilstrap.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we bow humbly praising you as our God. We ask for your guidance as important decisions are made for our city, and that hopefully each decision will be a better life for our residents. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilman Gilstrap. Under special recognition, tonight, we have with us Ms. Faith Stamp, Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club of the Danville area. Welcome, and please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor Saunders, and members of council. On behalf of the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Danville Area's Board of Directors, staff, and most importantly, the children that we serve every day, I want to say thank you for providing me with just a few minutes to share our story with you. As many of you know, I joined the Boys and Girls Club as the Executive Director just a little over two years ago. And thanks to the continued support through partnerships with the city and many funders in this community, we are serving the youth in the city of Danville who need us the most. Through funding nationally with the Office of Juvenile Prevention, as well as Community Development Block Grants, we're providing an evidence-based program that's providing lasting and measurable impact on the youth that we serve in the city of Danville. The programs that we offer to over 200 children instill the values of making good, smart decisions now, as well as in the future. In 2014, as well as in 2015, 100% of our high school seniors graduated on time. Most of all, they had a plan for their future. At the conclusion of 2015 academic year, 97% of our members were promoted to the next grade level. We focus every day on making sure that our members are prepared for school the next day by completing their homework, participating in activities that enrich their talents in music and arts, all while having fun. I firmly believe that one of the most highlighted statistics, and one that I'm probably most proud of, is that both in 2014 and 2015, we had zero teen pregnancies. And that's on both sides. I'd like to share a story with you of one of our members. Actually, she's an alum now. And her story goes like this. She, when she was 17 or 18 years old, she became the sole caretaker in her family. She took care of her mother, who had progressive MS, and her father had severe diabetes and just honestly wasn't as engaged as he should be. She was, at the time, when she was 18, a senior at George Washington High School. She went to Piedmont Regional Governor's School, and every morning before she got up, she made sure that her mother had breakfast. And she would get in her vehicle, she was lucky enough to have a little car, she would get in her vehicle and go to governor's school, attend governor's school, and as all of you know, she gets out half-day. She goes home, checks on her mother, and makes sure she has lunch. She gets in her car, and she goes to GW, spends the rest of the afternoon at GW, engaging with her friends, engaging in classes. And she's lucky enough because she has a small job at URW Credit Union in GW. And every afternoon, when she leaves GW, she goes home and checks on her mother. And about 4:45, 4:50 every afternoon, she'd come rolling into the parking lot. And if you found this young lady in our club, you would see her mentoring the younger children. You would see her with a smile on her face, providing assistance with homework, and giving back to those children in that club. Now, this young lady graduated seventh in her class from GW in 2015. When she graduated seventh in her class at GW, she had 51 college credits. She was accepted to Virginia Tech, entered Virginia Tech as a sophomore, with zero debt. She had over $34,000 worth of scholarships. And I asked her one day, I said, "What was it about the club that impacted your life?" And she said, "It was my respect. It was the place that I could go every day after school and know that I could have an impact on the others around me, the other kids, and that it helped build my self-confidence and my self-esteem to reach the goals that I am able to reach in this point in my life." And we do that every single day at the Boys and Girls Club. Again, providing support and helping our youth succeed academically and grow into young citizens that want to give back to our city, that want to come back to this city, is what we're all about, the Boys and Girls Club. So again, I just want to invite each of you to take a few moments out of your busy schedules and visit our club, right over by Gibson on Foster. Again, Mayor Saunders, members of council, thank you so much.
Let me thank you also for the work that you do, your staff, your board, and community's support. 100% graduation rate, 97% promoted to the next grade, zero teen pregnancy, and the story of the 17-year-old is amazing. Absolutely amazing. We appreciate very much all that you do. Anyone else? Mr. Jones?
I attended your event at the institute. Phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. And the young lady that you were speaking about, she did an excellent job. Thank you for all that you do for our community. Continue to do what you're doing. Thank you, Faith.
Thank you. Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, thank you for coming tonight and sharing that story with us. And as incredible as it was, I know that there's a dozen more like it that we could also hear about. And I just want to thank you for everything that you and the Boys and Girls Club do. You know, God bless y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Buckner, and Mr. Vice Mayor.
It's always good to hear good news about our youth. And when you have the accomplishments that you've done, it's just super. And we just commend you. And I just wish that the media would grab hold of good news about our youth and publicize it. It's so important, so important. Thank you so much.
Mr. Buckner?
It's just an amazing story there. And thank you so much for all you guys do. It's obvious that you guys have changed a lot of lives, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, this day and time, when so many families, there's only one parent at home, or no parents at home, or parents are working, you all provide them a home, a family to go to. And it's just so important, a role model. And that's what they need. They sometimes don't get that elsewhere. But the Boys and Girls Club is phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shanks?
Yes, I too would like to say thank you for all of your work and your entire organization's work. I had the good fortune of knowing a young man through Optimist League Football who ended up being a real successful story at Boys and Girls Club a few years back, Mr. Red. And I hope you got to meet him. I love the guy. And he really turned out a wonderful person. And I'm sure the Boys and Girls Club, despite losing his father recently, I'm sure the Boys and Girls Club had a lot to do with that.
If you follow him, he just went, when he graduated, he loves to cook. And so he decided he was going to become a chef. So he went to school. And he's now landed a job at NC State in the dining hall cooking. And he's on cloud nine.
When you see him again, tell him I said that.
I will.
Thank you so much. As you can see, Mr. Rowley had an engagement tonight and could not be here. But as you can see, you have the support of Danville City Council. Any comments, Mr. Gilstrap?
I too want to say thank you, Faith, that had opportunity to work with, at your facility. And I see the wonderful job that you do. And thanks for making a difference in our youth's lives.
And I know that Mr. Rowley supports you as well. That makes you unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. We also have Mr. Davis Montgomery from Duke Power. Would like to come forward.
Mayor Saunders, thank you very much, sir. And congratulations to Ms. Stamp for her successes. It's amazing how they're able to change people's lives for the better. So I think we all appreciate that. Davis Montgomery with Duke Energy, I'm the District Manager, here to just provide you an update. Thank you very much for the opportunity to do so. Again, I will be brief, but certainly available to answer all your questions. A few things I have for you tonight. I imposed on Mr. Larkin at the last minute today to possibly send you some pictures of some activity that's taking place at our site. We had a community open house on November the 24th in Eden, at which we had some subject matter experts to talk about the landfill itself, its construction, how it works, some of the things we have to go through with it. Somebody from our environmental group to ask people's questions that might have an interest in the health of the river or something to do with the site, groundwater, those sorts of things. We had somebody there from Waste Management to talk about how the movement of the coal ash will work, answer any questions they may have about where it's going and why. And we also had somebody there to talk about the decommissioning of our old coal-fired steam station. In addition, we offered tours of the new site. So a lot of the folks thoroughly enjoyed the ability to go onto the site, see it firsthand for themselves. And not to be presumptuous, but I think a lot of folks were surprised about the amount of work, the detail of the work, and the scope of the work that's been done down there. So I just want to touch on that just very briefly with you tonight on some of these pictures. If your pictures are in the same order that mine are, as you look at the very first one, this is looking from the southwest corner of the property, you'll see in the bottom left-hand corner, there's some steel infrastructure. And that is right next to the existing dam. And that is the old coal-fired station immediately to the left and off to the left of the picture. Towards the upper-left center, you see the new natural gas-fired station. That's the white building. And you'll see the condensers over to the side with the steam vapor coming out. And just about the middle of the picture, you'll see a brown field. That is the primary ash basin where the accident occurred. It is grown over with grasses and shrubs and small trees. But just above that, you see the secondary basin, which has still got water in it, which is still being utilized for some onsite activity. You can't see it towards the middle, but on the next picture, again, if yours is in the same order as mine, you're now looking from about the northeast corner back towards the generation station. And what I'll draw your attention to here is along the left-hand side, you see the curve of the railway. We had an existing railway track there at one point in time. We took it up, and we decommissioned the station. To handle this movement of the ash, we built that line back, and we built two additional lines. The reason for that, we have to have one line being able to go out. We have to have one line of train cars coming in. And we have to have one line of train cars that we can load. So that's the reason for the three lines. The white concrete pad there is about 85 cubic yards of concrete, about the length of five railway cars. You can see those along the side of it. And to the right, kind of towards the middle center, towards the bottom, to give you some scale, those are some very large, I think they're 20-ton dump trucks that you see states there. What you can't see, but what you might be able to see is underneath each one of those trucks, and every piece of equipment on that property is what we call an apron. There's a catch apron underneath each and every one of those. We're being monitored on anything that hits the ground on that site. So if a drop of oil gets into that water, if we see an oil sheen across the bottom of that apron, we pull that truck and go have it rehanded, or hydraulic, whatever it might be. We're watching that site very carefully. Just above those trucks, you'll see what I'm going to point out in the next picture, and that is the dry ash stack number one. So on the next picture, you'll be looking at that stack from about the northwest corner of the property. You'll see the trucks over to the left. You'll see the water in the secondary basement, basement top middle. That gives you some sort of feel for the size of the current dry ash stack. This is all the material that will be completely excavated, moved by train to the approved landfill, permitted landfill in Jetersburg, Virginia. You can see that we started taking some of the topsoil dirt off of that. We will do some test runs with that dirt this week, where we just take dirt. It has no CCRs in it, coal combustion residuals in it. And we're just testing, loading it, taking it down, putting it on the train cars, putting it through the process. We expect to begin loading some of the actual material at the end of next week, hopefully, weather permitting, those sort of things happen. What will happen on that site is that that dry ash stack will be completely removed. It will then be replaced by the approved landfill, using all the various layers that we've talked about before. And the material out of the existing basin will then be dried and put back into that same landfill and covered up. So that's just to give you a feel for what's been going on there at that site. Mr. Gilstrap was very astute. He caught me earlier on and said, "You know, I appreciate the pictures. It would have been nice if he'd had it before, then and after." So I will commit to getting your before pictures so you can kind of compare the activity that's taking place there. So that's it about the site. Did you have any questions for me on any of that? Mr. Gilstrap?
The middle picture, in the top-left, there is a, that is not a coal ash production power plant?
No, sir. That is a natural gas-fired power plant.
I thought when we toured the site, that was...
The steam coming out.
Looked steam coming up.
Let me be very careful and point out, that is steam. That is water vapor that's been gone through the generation process. It's now being cooled and returned back to the air, to the river. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that plant was closed in 2012.
Yes, sir. The actual...
You said, you made a comment, the second pond, it still has water over it. You said there's still some activity there?
We use that pond to work as our stormwater catch basin for the site right now. If we have to excavate any water out of a storm basin or someplace else, we will put it in there to allow it to settle out. But there's nothing on that site now that's flowing towards that pond that has coal ash in it.
But what's in that pond? And it have coal ash in it?
Oh, it does have coal ash. Yes, sir. It does have coal ash in the bottom of that pond now.
So it's going to be drained, too?
Yes, sir. Well, what happens in that pond? That is the secondary settlement pond. So to take it in steps, the primary pond, you would put the initial influx of sluice. It would settle there. There would be in the, well, in this picture, it's in the corner, the right corner of that primary basin. Once it settled, the water off the top of that, which still had some material in it, would flow to the secondary basin. Then in the secondary basin, it would settle with second step. It's much like a wastewater treatment plant. It would settle with second step, be monitored, then be returned to the river. And that's...
But there's still coal ash in that water?
Yes, sir. There is.
But that's still sitting beside the river? I mean, it's...
Yes, sir.
Is it going to stay there?
No, sir. That material will be moved to the...
It's going to be completely removed, both of the ponds?
Yes, sir. Those two ponds, and I appreciate the question, that's exactly right. Those two ponds will be completely, the material will be completely dried, that material will be completely moved up the hill to where the current dry ash stack is today. So that site, we're currently underneath some conversation with the state. Do we slope it down to the river? Do we leave it at its current height? How do they want us to treat it? But no, sir, that material will be completely removed.
Well, I was out there at your open house, and it was very impressive. Those are huge trucks.
Yes, so they, I think I'm correct in thinking those are 20-ton trucks. The scale of it in this picture is kind of deceiving.
Yeah, and every bucket they pick up is measured. Every ounce is measured and...
I think the front-end loader is something like a 10. Is it possible, some of you that know better than me, Mr. Shanks, maybe it's a 10-ton front-end loader. It's a huge piece of equipment. But it's going to take that to move that and read our timeline.
That one, that's almost a mountain there, that one thing, that's accumulated over the years.
I believe what I've heard is that it's about 60 feet in height. And I think that's from the bottom of the material to the top of it now. And then we, just about the same when we get finished with it.
And that's all going to Jetersburg?
Yes, Jetersburg. Yes, sir.
Okay, Jetersburg, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments from Mr. Montgomery? Thank you, sir.
And if I might, just two very quick thanks, or along that same line. The other two updates I have for you is our Dan Rivers Stakeholder Team is still working. Appreciate Mr. Screen, your being a part of that team. Our next meeting will be here in Danville on the 19th. That group is going from the discussion stage to the implementation stage. And the last thing I have is just a brief update. As you know, we had a fine from the state of North Carolina. There was a $25.1 million fine that was for alleged groundwater violations at all, at one of our sites. We have since settled with the state for $7 million for all 14, to cover all 14 of the sites. So that's just another, one of those milestones that we've been able to settle and put behind us and hopefully for the good of everybody. As always, I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. We're about to enter into the communication portion of our meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that City Council did in January this year adopt new rules. And anyone who wished to speak will be allowed five uninterrupted minutes to speak. If you're up in the group, you'll get 10 minutes for that. But you must ask the group to stand and be recognized as you speak. And I remind people that even with this rule, the chair reserves the right to intervene if deemed appropriate. Anyone wish to speak on any matter that's not on the agenda? If so, you may do so at this time. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, you will be heard when the item is considered. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir. Your name, please?
Dwayne. Dwayne?
Dwayne?
Yes, Dwayne Lee.
Dwayne Lee?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay?
All right. So during your last meeting, Chief Broadfoot was here. And he went, well, Danville ranked consistently for the fifth time, I believe, over the last five years, in the top five. And he spoke a little on the statistical breakdown and also his attempt to reduce violent crime in Danville. And you guys asked him back to talk a little bit more in detail about, you know, enhancing policing in problem areas and possibly the cost of more precincts and problem areas. I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but I read about it in the paper. And with respect to what's going on nationally in this country with regards to the police and the approaches that in the past that we've taken to combat crime, I would like to just shed a little of what I believe was missing from the conversation. He, Chief Broadfoot highlighted that his attention he pays to, well, the police department as a whole pays to drug and weapon crimes are the result for the decline in crime. However, that is contrary to popular, well, statistical data. My case, my case in point, the Brennan Center for the University of, Brennan Center of Justice at the University of North Carolina, New York, I'm sorry, released a report earlier this year. It was a deep, very, very detailed report. It went into all 50 states over the past 30 years. And they went into great detail explaining why exactly they felt, looking at the actual statistics, why crime actually was on the decline. And they found that from up until, well, 1980 through 1990, incarceration, policing, that had an effect on crime. But since then, the effects have been zero. So I made that point to say that policing, more policing, more, that's, it just, it just doesn't, it just, it creates what economists call diminishing returns when the people that are criminalized really have no impact on the overall crime rate. So to ratchet up these arrests, to continue to police in this way that we have policed over these last five years, don't do anything but leave us at the same point. I made these points to really appeal to council, to like really, we need to really go in a different direction towards something more or less we see on the north side of community policing, which Chief Broadfoot touched on as well, and said that that is the reason that turns people against the police. But in reality, the way we've policed for so long and the city have turned the citizens against the police. This year, actually, there was a survey released by Gilstrap. They do surveys. And they released a report that cited the confidence in police at an all-time low since 1990.
Mr. Rooster Lee, with regards to the five-minute rule, I ask respectfully, are you close to wrapping?
Yes, yes, I am close. I'm sorry. I'm five minutes, all right. And, yes, so, and I believe that that is like the, you know, for, I feel like in relation to that statistic that I just gave, that that is more of the problem and that what has turned the police, people against the police. And I guess arrests...
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Is a motion approved on minutes of October 8, 2015 meeting? Mr. Campbell, second, Mr. Buckner. Discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell? Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley? Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Owe with the Confederation of Adopting Ordinances to Appropriate Comprehensive Services Act funds. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone like to speak? Close the public hearing. Counselor, your pleasure. Counselor, your pleasure. Mr. Gil...
Mr. Mayor, I move with adoption of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2016 budget appropriation orders by appropriating Comprehensive Services Act funds and providing local matching funds for a total amount of $4,690,410.
Second, Mr. Campbell. Discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Reverend Campbell? Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley? Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
New business, the Confederation of Adopting a Resolution to Request the Vida, to allocate funds to widening Mount Cross Road. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Close the public hearing. Counselor, your pleasure. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose a resolution approving a request that the Department of Transportation to allocate House Bill 2 Construction District Grant Program and High-Priority Projects Program Funds to widening Mount Cross Road to four lanes.
Second, by Mr. Shanks. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Shanks?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to explain to the public that the House Bill 2 is the new method of funding for the transportation dollars that was passed by the General Assembly in 2014. It's a very stringent rule with regard to what projects get approved and/or even considered. And the MPO and members of the MPO from the City Council here were, worked with the Lynchburg staff and the West Piedmont Plan District staff to develop a priority system. And this project is a project that meets the criteria that the Highway Department has set, the new criteria. And we felt like this was the best opportunity to have a project approved in this area, as well as being a very important project.
Okay, further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
As well as being a very important project.
Okay, further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
New business, the Confederation of adopting an ordinance regarding mass transit fee changes. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Opposed public hearing, Mr. Buckner?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the Danville Transit Systems Reserve a Ride Fee for Students effective December first, two thousand and fifteen.
Second, Mr. Jones. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Uh, just a comment, uh, I was with actually a patient today who drives a bus for the city and brought that up, and there were, after be some students there from out of town. We mentioned the, we were going to vote on this to, uh, decrease the fee for students, and they were very impressed, students were. So, I think it'll be a very popular, uh, vote.
Very good. Okay. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Confederation of adopting an ordinance regarding mass transit fee changes. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak? Opposed public hearing, Mr. Buckner?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget appropriation ordinance to accept a grant from the state of Virginia for a victim witness program. Council, your pleasure. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a grant from the Commonwealth of Virginia for a domestic violence victim program in the amount of forty-four thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars and appropriating the same.
Second, Mr. Campbell. Discussion on the motion? First reading. Confederation of adopting an ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget by federal grant to aid WW Moore Junior Detention Home. Council, your pleasure. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty sixteen budget appropriation ordinance for a federal grant in the amount of forty-four thousand fifty-seven dollars to aid the food service operations at WW Moore Junior Detention Home and appropriating the same.
Okay, there's second, Mr. Buckner. Discussion on the motion? First reading. Council, I'd like to pull item F from the agenda for more discussion, perhaps in work session, but we need to talk about that a little bit more before we take the resolution. So I will pull that if there are no objections. Thank you. Item G, Confederation of approving a resolution for the Patriot Way designation on Memorial Drive. Mr. Buckner?
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, approve a resolution appropriating, approving the designation of Memorial Drive between Central Boulevard and Main Street as Patriot Way.
Okay, there's second, everybody. Okay, uh, Mr. Vogler. Discussion on the motion? Uh, Mr. Gilstrap?
Just like to clarify, I've had several residents to speak to me that we aren't changing or altering Memorial Drive in any way. And I just wanna clarify that Memorial Drive will remain Memorial Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, uh, I wanna thank, uh, everyone that was involved in this process. It's been a, about a year or so, I think, since we first started the Fraternal Order of Eagles wanting to donate the flags. Councilman Buckner, uh, kinda led the charge on this, and- and different various, uh, city staff worked together to make this happen. And, uh, it's gonna be, we're gonna have a dedication ceremony tomorrow at noon, uh, down where the, uh, the flags are, Memorial Drive, invite folks to come out to that. Uh, should be a wonderful ceremony. Again, I'd like to thank everyone that made this happen.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I agree, uh, want to invite everybody to come out tomorrow at noon and thank Councilman Buckner for leading the charge. Thank you.
I'd like to echo all that has been said, and special thanks for recognition that our city gives to our men and women in active duty as well as those who have served, and this motivation for others to serve in the future. Okay, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Rowley?
Aye.
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
I definitely do.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
First, we're approving a resolution to endorse the Danville Urbanized Area MPO's application to veto for grant funds to be used for State Road three-eleven, Berry Hill Road access and widening project. Mr. Vogler?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution endorsing the application by the Danville Urbanized Area Metropolitan Planning Organization for Virginia House Bill Two Program Grant Funds for fiscal year twenty seventeen regarding State Road three-eleven, Berry Hill Road access and widening project.
Second, Mr. Buckner. Discussion on the motion? Uh, Mr. Shanks?
Likewise, uh, Mayor, all the comments regarding House Bill Two apply to this- this particular item as well, but again, just for the benefit of, uh, the public, this only is a partial project of what will be needed for Berry Hill once Berry Hill is developed. However, this amount of, uh, funding will allow, uh, an opportunity for a tenant or tenants, uh, in the megapark that would generate up to twenty-two-hundred employees. And, uh, it really is just, uh, uh, money to widen the lanes, the two lanes that are there, and to widen the shoulders, and also to improve the intersection at Route fifty-eight and Berry Hill Road. And, uh, just one other item on this, everybody's known Berry Hill Road is State Route eight-sixty-three forever. Uh, during the last few years, part of the Berry Hill Initiative has resulted in the state, uh, taking on Berry Hill Road as a, uh, primary Route three-eleven. So that's good news as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Rowley?
Mayor Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Shanks?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Communication, Mr. Lockett?
Okay, Mr. Attorney?
Well, I'm sure others will expand on it. Uh, tomorrow night, there's a very big football game at George Washington High School, and I just wanted to say, go Eagles.
And if you'd like to add one more, I think you're paying your respect to a very worthy cause.
Uh, oh, No Shave November, so my razor didn't break. I'm trying to go this month without shaving and then donate those proceeds to the Danville Cancer Society.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Yeah, I, uh, too, would like to, I guess, echo about everything Clark just said. Uh, GW, let's have it tomorrow, man, it's gonna be a great game. I think they're even opening the gates a little early, expecting a huge crowd. Um, and what a great job those guys have done this year. It's been an outstanding season, and let's, uh, let's take it all the way this year, guys. Uh, also, No Shave November, we did a fundraiser last year, it was a lot of fun. I had several events throughout the month, and we're gonna do that again this year. We'll have a Facebook page up probably, uh, by Monday, and, uh, posters, banners, uh, do what you can, come out to what you can, support it any way you can. It all goes to a great cause, the Danville Cancer Association. And, uh, Patriots Way, I certainly would like to invite everybody to come out tomorrow at noon, um, on the corner of, uh, uh, Walkin', Don't Walk, right at, right at the DMV, so I hope everybody can make it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, very briefly, we just want to salute all of the winners of the election of yesterday, and, uh, go Eagles on Friday night, tomorrow night, looking for a great victory. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gilstrap?
Uh, yes, I would like to thank our citizens for, uh, coming to and speaking, and, uh, thank you for your, it seems like every meeting we have a lot of the same citizens present, and I just thank you for attending. Also like to say, go Eagles, it's an important game, and, uh, if I might take it one more level, I'd like to say, go Tigers. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to visit some schools last week, Woodbury, to the entire staff in regards to the accreditation. Just wanna thank the principal and entire staff at Woodbury for what they are doing with those young people and bringing those scores up. Also at Bonner, I attended Bonner this weekend, hospitality and things I see at Bonner. Couple of years ago, we heard all kinds of stories about Bonner, but so many great things that happened at Bonner, and I'm proud of what I saw at Bonner. And at George Washington High School this past week, I attended the gentleman by choice induction ceremony, phenomenal event. So many wonderful things that happen in our school system. And, um, lastly, Mr. Mayor, you've heard so much about George Washington High School, um, I would be there at the game tomorrow, all roads lead to George Washington High School. Just wanna thank all of the citizens who have approached me. Yes, that was my daughter, who was engaged, is on social network, so, um, she was at a concert, and to all those who have, uh, came to me and said congratulations, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yep. Go Eagles, uh, great game. This is probably the last game of the regular season, isn't it? And, uh, so, the big one, they need to win this one. Uh, a gentleman left, though, but he- he brought a point, Mr. Lee. I don't think any of us would disagree that the answer to decreasing crime is not more persecution and putting more people in jail. Uh, it's addressing the underlying causes of crime, which are most often economic, poor education, lack of jobs, school dropout, teen pregnancies, uh, the drug abuse, uh, problem, the epidemic we have, both prescription and non-prescription. Everyone up here, all of the council, uh, our goal is to improve the economy of this area and increase, uh, jobs. And I think this will do much more in the long run to decreasing crime in this area, uh, than any police work. So, appreciate the gentleman for bringing that up. And finally, Veterans Day is next week, and the Veterans Day Parade is Sunday, and we will be there, so please come out.
Mr. Rowley? Mr. Shanks?
Uh, exactly, the Veterans Day Parade is Sunday, I think it's at two-thirty. I was gonna bring that up, and, uh, fitting that, uh, Patriots Way is being, uh, opened right- right before the Veterans Day Parade in the weekend. Uh, getting back to the crime issue that was discussed earlier tonight, I'm, I- I've listened and heard everything that was said, and I don't argue, uh, but I do want to say that I'm concerned that we had the crime scene, crime unit that we had that was working the neighborhoods, and we backed off of that, and we, I, we were seeing so many good results. I hate, I hate that that has taken place, and I hope, and I know the chief is supposed to get back with us on several issues, I hope that won't totally be mothballed, because I- I thought we were seeing great results from the crime scenes units, and they were such successful results, they moved from one neighborhood to another, and, uh, I hate to see that, uh, mothballed. And in the meantime, it seems our crime rate here in town, particularly shootings, has increased in the last several months. So that really concerns me. Finally, I'd like to also wish the GW Eagles success in their game tomorrow night. Uh, it was pointed out, I- I don't know if anyone mentioned it, it was mentioned that the gates would be open early, someone just pointed out to me they'll be open at five o'clock. So, uh, I wanna pass that along, if it wasn't earlier, pass it along. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Vogler?
Uh, briefly on, on crime and that issue, we did have that discussion at the last council meeting in our work session, and, um, there was a discussion, I know it was reported in the paper, about potentially adding some small, uh, whatever you wanna call them, pop-up precincts, uh, in- in areas of our city where we've had crime more prevalent in the past few years. I do support that, and- and I look forward to the conversation that we're gonna have in the future about how we can make that a reality. And it was mentioned, Patriot Way tomorrow, again, wanna invite folks to come out at noon for that, for that, uh, dedication ceremony, and the Veterans Day Parade is Sunday at two-thirty. It's always a great time, the weather's supposed to be good on Sunday, so invite folks to come out for that. And yes, lastly, as was mentioned, uh, GW is taking on Magna Vista tomorrow. The winner of that game will win the district, it's gonna be a huge game. Um, last year, we went down to Magna Vista and packed the house, uh, on the road and, uh, and beat 'em down there. So I know it's gonna be a huge crowd tomorrow night. I'll be there, uh, with a couple thousand of our friends, uh, ready to cheer on the Eagles, so I just wanna hold it up high, hold it up proud. Go Eagles. Thank you.
And your shoulder pads, and your knee pads, and your-
I'm ready to go if they need me, man.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor Saunders?
I too, like everyone, very proud of GW, of the Eagles, for all they, they do represent our city very well, and some very brave, uh, young men, and thank the women and family as well for supporting them in their, in their efforts. With regards to police and community, I think it's always good when the community, uh, becomes concerned, expresses concern with regards to law enforcement, but more importantly, when we join with law enforcement. I've said before, we're all aware of the issue, the conversation taking place around the nation. Conversation taking a pla- taking place around the nation. I believe, you look at Danville, we are in a good situation in the sense that we have excellent law enforcement officers, our police department, sheriff department, and others, excellent officers with strong leaders. And I'm glad that the community come forward and express their concern, suggest new ideas, and bring to our attention anything that we may not have been made aware of. So I encourage all of us to continue to express our concerns, to continue to support our police department. I'd like to thank our police chief for the report he gave to city council in the most recent work session, and we do know that a follow-up to that, to that session, uh, will be coming. So we're very, very thankful for that. Yes, Veterans Day Parade is Sunday, uh, please come out and show your support for the men and women, again, who have served and those who are still serving. Um, a lot of people in Danville, in our region, served and/or family members served, and